Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a special meeting on Tuesday, November seventeen, two thousand and twenty via video conference. The time is six P M. I want to welcome the viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the Superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members receive information related to items on today's agenda. Agenda items would not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to hear the matters discussed. Thank you for taking the time to join us today and for the interest in Galena Park Independent School District.
This time I will call roll. When your name is called, please answer with here or present. Ramon Garza, President.
Present.
Jeff Miller, Vice President.
Here.
Adrian Stevens, Secretary.
Adrian Stevens here.
Wilford J. Bruceard Jr.
Here.
Wanda Heath Johnson. Noe Asparza.
Noe Asparza here.
Norma Hernandez.
You're muted, Norma.
Norma Hernandez, present.
Also joining us through video conference and will respond with here or present are Sharonda Johnson, Executive Director for School and Community Relations.
Here.
Brishan Thompson, Coordinator for School and Community Relations. Mary Snyder Vogel, Attorney, Thompson and Horton, L L P.
Here.
Anna Salinas, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent's Office.
Here.
Brian Clements, Executive Director for Security and Cyber Security and Chief of Police Interim Director for Technology.
Here.
Elizabeth Valdez, Executive Assistant to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent.
Here.
Cabinet Member, Sonya George. Dr. Wanda Giaccona.
Here.
Elizabeth Layler. Terry Moore.
Here.
Dr. Michelle Epps.
Here.
Gina Edgar.
Here.
Dr. David Harris.
Here.
Mike McKay.
Here.
Holly Malloy.
Here.
And I, Dr. John Moore, Superintendent of Schools, here. Staff members will practice social distancing as required in outline. We will use masks, hand sanitizers, disinfectants, et cetera, as recommended. I will now turn this meeting over to Ramon Garza, Board President.
Thank you, John. Ms. Valdez, are there any citizen participation items for this evening?
We have no citizen participation items today.
Ms. Valdez, are there any public comments items for today?
Yes, we have a public comment item.
Patriots who have duly registered for Policy B D Local may address the board regarding matters of concern, interest to the district other other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the video conference audience that the comments of the speakers sent via online link reflect their own positions or opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments. Please understand that the lack of response from a board member does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Ms. Valdez, you may begin.
Dr. Moore has a public comment tonight. Dr. Moore, you may begin.
Okay, so uh we have, we have a special announcement tonight and I don't, for our, for our public out there listening. Mr. Bruceard is attending our board meeting for his last time in his official capacity. Uh he's been a board member for us for over twelve years and uh Wilford, on behalf of all of the employees here at G P I S D, all the students here in G P I S D, all of our community, we, we want to wish you the most sincerest thank you for all you've done. You bring a special, you bring a special warm personality with integrity matched by nobody. Everywhere you go and, and it's just a pleasure to be around you. Uh you, you make the day brighter for everybody you run into. All of us, all the community, uh you know, all the events we attended together. Uh and, and so, you know, Mary has been working with us for thirty-three years. You've been on this board a long time. You know, uh all of us that have been here many, many years cherish our friendship with you. So on behalf of all of us, thanks a million. And most of all, on behalf of the children in this community, you've done wonderful things for them and there will be a special place at the pearly gates for you, my friend. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then we have a special for you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate that, appreciate that.
And we did all that practicing social distancing, so uh and it was hard to do that way, Wilford, because I want to give you a big hug and so does everybody here.
I might say a few words.
It's public comment, so.
I want to uh. I want to first and foremost thank God. With blessing me with this opportunity. To, to become a board member for this great school district. Certainly wasn't in my plan or vision to run for the, for an office. But God doesn't always call the qualified. But he qualifies those that are called. I hope I serve well. And I got life right here to, to read, but I'm not going to be able to make it. So I just want to thank everybody uh for their support. I want to thank my wife, my daughter, who also is a graduate of North Shore. I want to thank uh Dr. Henry, all the great superintendents I've served over the years, Dr. Mark Henry, Dr. Angie Williams, and of course, Dr. John Moore. Over these years, it's been, been amazing to observe their leadership qualities while always staying focused on our prized possession of students of Galena Park ISD. I want to also recognize Paula Henny, Kathy Bundy, Geneva Boyet, and Elizabeth Valdez for keeping us all prepared and on task. It's been my honor to serve on this board. I want to especially thank Lionel Quinn for reaching out to me and talking to me about running for this board. I know this current board, Ramon, Jeff, Adrian, Wanda, Noe. Norm and our new addition, Mr. Sanchez, will continue to keep their focus on commitment on what we are here for, to produce lifelong learners, quality citizens for the world. God bless Galena Park ISD and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and Wilford. We are surely going to miss you uh as being around here at the board. I know you still be in the community. You've always been in this community. We want to uh for myself, uh thank you not just for being uh my former or my, or my partner here on the board, but also being a great friend to me uh and a, and a great man of God. Uh and we are definitely going to miss you. Thank you for serving uh these twelve years to, you know, like you said, the school district that you graduated from. So uh we want to thank you. I want to thank you uh for your service and your commitment to this board.
Okay.
President Garza, there are no more items in this category.
An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by Sections five-five-one point zero-zero-one to the Sections five-five-one point zero-eight-four of the Texas Government Code, the Opens Meetings Act. The time is six oh-nine P M. All staff, with the exception of Dr. Moore, Ms. Schneider Vogel, Ms. McKay, Ms. Valdez, and Ms. Salinas are dismissed from the meeting at this time. All staff joining us video, video conference will be placed in a Zoom waiting room. Staff who are live streaming this meeting, please stop the live stream video.
Yes, sir.
Executive session is adjourned. The live streaming has begun again, and the board is now an open session. The time is six twenty P M. I will entertain a motion on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented?
I, Jeff Miller, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
Motion will be moved by Jeff Miller and second by Norma Hernandez. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wilford Bruceard.
Wilford Bruceard.
Noe Asparza.
Noe Asparza, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motions carry six to zero with no abstentions. For the November third, two thousand and twenty trustee elections, Galena Park ISD entered a joint election agreement with Harris County. The Harris County Clerk's Office has provided the district with the official canvas report, the official cumulative report, and the official precinct report. The official canvas report was presented to the Board of Trustees showing the voting results for the November third, two thousand and twenty Galena Park ISD trustee election for positions five, six, and seven. For position five, the total number of votes for Kim Wimbley was four thousand five hundred and one votes. The total number of votes for Herbert Alexander Sanchez was seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three votes. The total number of votes for Trent Johnson was six thousand one hundred and thirteen votes. Herbert Alexander Sanchez received the plurality of votes for position six. For, for position five, I'm sorry. For position six, the total number of votes for Noe Asparza was ten thousand two hundred and sixty. The total number of votes for Christina Saddlepack was eight thousand eleven. Noe Asparza received the plurality of votes for position six. For position seven, Norma Hernandez ran unopposed for position seven. The Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees officially finds and determines that the November third, two thousand and twenty trustee election was duly conducted in accordance with the Texas Election Code. The returns of said election have been delivered by Harris County Clerk's Office, and the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees has duly canvassed said returns in an opens meetings on November seventeen, two thousand and twenty with a quorum of Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees. I will entertain a motion to approve the canvas returns of the November third, two thousand and twenty Galena Park ISD trustee elections for positions five, position six, and position seven, and authorize myself as board president to issue certificates of elections in accordance with the official election results and applicable law as presented.
I, Jeff Miller, move we approve the canvas of returns for the November third, two thousand and twenty Galena Park ISD trustee elections for positions five, six, and seven, and authorize the board president to issue certificates of election in accordance with the official election results and applicable law as presented.
I, Wilford Bruceard, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize G P I S D to utilize my electronic signature for this item. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
I, Adrian Stevens, authorize the use of my electronic signature.
A motion was made by Jeff Miller and seconded by Wilford Bruceard. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wilford Bruceard.
Wilford Bruceard, in favor.
Noe Asparza.
Noe Asparza, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motions carry six to zero with no abstentions. There being no other business before the board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is six twenty-six P M.